Number 12, 2020 meeting in the Manatee Springs Planning Commission. And first item of business would be approval of the minutes of the October 14th meeting. So can I get a motion or for that?
Motion to approve the minutes from the October 14th, 2020 meeting.
And a second tip. Okay. And so all those who were there who were in favor, raise their hand. That's three. And we have three abstentions. So are two abstentions. I'm not sure if, are you going to come in Gloria? You're welcome to join the meeting. I see you're muted. But with anyway, so the ministers approved and next item is to go into the business part of the meeting. And before we start, I'll describe the process we follow will. I'll call an item for consideration and planning staff will describe what the request was, what their under what their analysis of the issues are and what their findings are, what their recommendations are. And following that will allow the applicant to speak and state their their opinions, what they think about the request or the recommendation, if they have anything they'd like to add or dispute or elaborate on. And then following that will open the public hearing to the public for public comment. And we'll listen to any public comment and at that time, anyone in the audience will have the opportunity to express their opinion on the item under consideration. And following that will close the public comment period of the public hearing and will deliberate. And throughout the process will be guided by our municipal code. We we look at what's in the code and and base our judgments on that. We don't legislate, we don't make new laws, we strictly interpret what's in the municipal code. So when we deliberate, then we'll vote possibly to approve, possibly deny, possibly will table an item for future consideration, or we may modify what the original request was in some way so that we can approve it. So that's the process we follow and before we start, are there any, anyone with ex parte contacts or conflicts that they need to disclose? Okay, so I see none. So now we're ready to get going on the first item of unfinished business and I will have to wait for.
I can get that started for us.
Okay, well, okay, so item two is variance 2014, a rear yard setback 11 feet, one inches where 15 is required. Forty-four Grant Avenue Kylie Kyle and Micah Myers applicants.
Great, thank you. Yes, so this was an item that was postponed from last month's hearing with the idea that there was additional information that was needed from the applicant. A number of items had been received within 36 hours, 48 hours of the meeting. We'd hoped that that would be sufficient time for review, but unfortunately it was determined not to be. So we postponed that to this month. So yes, so as you'll note in the report, I won't, I'll just go through the highlights of it because we do have so many hearings tonight. As you'll note in the report and the staff report, we do have a site map where we indicate where the location is and how the property is accessed. It is at a relatively elevated location. Oh, I saw that was Michelle there. Um, now what we do ask all applicants to do is go through and address each of the variance criteria. So with Adam on page two of this particular staff report. Um, this is probably the most interesting one and will need some input from the applicant as we go through this. Item one, the applicant would suffer hardship as a result of the application of the code, which hardship is not generally applicable to other lands or structures in the same zone district because of the unusual configuration of the applicant's boundary, property boundaries, unique circumstances related to the location of existing structures therein, or the existence of exceptional topographic conditions therein. So for the staff report, we indicate that the application has noted the project engineers based on the documentation we have have not specifically have not recommended moving the garage to the south closer to the slope. A tier one geologic hazards report by N tech engineering has been provided to the planning department. The report notes steep slopes to the southwest and northeast sides of the building site and indicates the proposed garage is far enough away from the slope areas that it will not be affected. No specific distance from the top of the slope is recommended. The application further indicates even if the garage were to be moved to the south, there are also structural requirements regarding attachment of the garage to the existing house. Um, providing written statements or testimony at the meeting as we know it here, confirming the engineer's recommendation on the location of the garage and either the engineer or architect's evaluation of structural limitations on where the garage attaches to the house should be provided. We think this is probably the only open item with this application. As such, a site plan by the architect was, excuse me, a site plan by the architect and submitted by the applicants just before the last planning commission meeting shows the garage addition cited to meet setbacks. Staff understands that there may be discussion regarding this plan that will address why this is not a feasible scenario. This does need clarification as on the face of it, the site plan appears to now illustrate the addition can be moved or to meet to the rear yard setback. The applicant's revised narrative indicates application of the code would cause a hardship due to the existing topographic conditions and structural requirements for the attachment of the said addition to the existing home. Item two. There are no design alternatives or alternative locations for structures that would eliminate the need for the requested variance or would reduce the amount of the variance required. The variance is the minimum variance that would make it possible, the reasonable use of land as structure. The applicant's response to this and our analysis of it is that the application clarifies that the garage is not oversized, but 10 feet of the 34 feet width provides for a laundry room. A 24 foot width is standard for a two car garage and 10 feet for a laundry room appears to be quite reasonable. Therefore, reducing the size of the addition is not feasible. If moving the addition away from the rear setback is not feasible per the justification for criterion number one, it does not appear there would be reasonable design or location alternatives that would reduce or eliminate the need for the variance. As such, staff finds the application provides sufficient justification with confirmation by the engineer and architect to meet this criterion. Item three, the enforcement of the provisions of the code deprives the applicant of rights enjoyed by a majority of the other properties in the same zone district. With regard to this one, the application states a majority of properties on Grant Avenue have two car garages attached to homes. They state their safety in regard to wildlife, especially when arriving home at night without direct access to the home from the garage. Per the El Paso County Assessor's website, out of seven properties on Grant Avenue, it appears that at least four have attached garages. As such, staff finds the application provides sufficient justification to meet this criterion. Number three, the need for the variance does not result from the actions of the applicant or his or her agent, a violation of any provision of this code or a previously granted variance. Staff report indicates that the application states there have been no actions taken that result in the need for the variance in that this is not an after the fact variance request. The applicants have planned for the garage construction, but have not yet taken action to initiate construction. The application also notes some discussions with city administration regarding the cumbersome process and the planned code revisions. Variance is, as you know, are legal processes with state requirements the city must meet. So whether the code updates would address situations similar to the applicants is not known at this time. Whether or not the property setbacks were considered before the start of the design process, based on the application's assertion, no action on construction of the garage has taken place, which resulted in the need for this request. Staff finds this criterion has been met. Item five. Reasonable protections are afforded adjacent properties. The revised application narrative refers to the geo hazards report as evidence of protected afforded adjacent properties. Further, the application relates comments by the project contractor on stormwater concerns expressed by downhill neighbors. In response to public notice, planning staff were contacted by residents on Canon Avenue concerned about historical issues of stormwater flow which originated on Grant. Being exacerbated due to the new structure and increases to impervious surfaces near major hillside slopes greater than 30%. In the staff report, we do detail under municipal code 14 dot 01 dot 040 stormwater quality management guidelines. What those are. The applicant's proposed construction is geographically situated in an area that it that does have greater than 30% slopes that contributed to the area susceptibility to mudder debris flow. While the lot has been previously disturbed, the new structure and any additional driveway improvements will increase impervious surface. Impervious services. Impervious services contribute to stormwater flow and subsequent erosion. The applicant's lot is zone GR, which is general residential, which allows up to 50% maximum lot coverage. You will note that the proposed structure combined with existing structures does not appear to exceed the allowed coverage. As such, no adverse comments or negative recommendations have been made by city departments or outside reviewing agencies with regard to this matter. Staff has received a letter of support for the request from the neighbor at two Lincoln Avenue. Following this, which is provided following this report. As such, staff finds the geo hazards report does find the proposed construction is feasible for this location and no adverse impacts or extraordinary mitigation to protect adjacent properties is required. Staff is recommending an erosion and stormwater control plan based on the information provided and under the condition proposed, staff finds the proposal meets this criterion. Item six. The requested variance will not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the surrounding property. As such, and as you'll note in the report, staff finds given the location of the property, lack of surrounding development and based on the geo hazards report that the proposed construction will not change the character of the neighborhood or the wider surrounding area. Staff finds the application meets this criterion as well. Item seven, the granting of the variance will A, B, and C observe the spirit of the code, secure the public safety and welfare, ensure that substantial justice is done. The application cites that the ownership of the adjacent property, the combination of the entire ownership into one tax parcel and the owner's intention to retain all of the property for privacy observes the spirit of this code. The application states the proposed garage will result in greater safety for the applicants. This criterion refers to public safety, not private safety. Staff does not see any issues with the proposal that would result in issues with public safety or welfare. The application asserts that approval of the variance would be reasonable and fair, maintain the spirit of the code and the project will abide by all other laws and regulations. As such, staff finds the application does now address and meet this criterion. As noted previously, in addition to erosion and drainage plan, the proposed construction will require wildfire mitigation evaluation by the fire department. I would like the applicant and he is, they are aware that this is provided free of charge and will need to be submitted prior to the issuance of a property improvement permit by the planning department. There is no flood plain on this property and as such, a flood plain permit is not required. Okay, now moving into staff recommendation, which is on page five. We will note that the revised application has addressed the variance criteria with confirmation from the qualified experts. Of the circumstances cited in the application narrative, staff believes the seven criteria have been sufficiently addressed and justification has been provided. Based on the above justification, staff recommends approval of variance 2014 for a rear yard setback at 44 Grant Avenue with the following conditions. One, the applicants provide written statements or in person testimony from N tech engineering confirming the garage should not be moved south closer to the edge of the adjacent slope and from the project engineer, excuse me, project architect or the engineer confirming the structural requirements for connecting the house to the garage do not allow for the new construction to be moved in order to reduce or eliminate the setback variance. If this information is provided at the hearing, this is a staff note. If this information is provided at the hearing, either in writing or by testimony of the engineer and or architect, then the above condition can and should be deleted. If the applicants propose to provide written statements following the hearing, this condition should be retained and allow for staff to receive and confirm content of the statements. This would prevent having to come back for continued evaluation of this application. Item two, submission of a stormwater and erosion control plan for the subject property is required before the issuance of permits to allow the garage construction. The plan shall bestow best management practices for temporary drainage and erosion controls during construction and provide permanent controls to remain once construction is finished. As you scroll through the staff report provided to you, there is an aerial photograph of 44 Grant Avenue that documents the existing conditions. Um, you will note where the driveway is coming from Grant Avenue at the top of the photo. As well, there are additional photos of the property on the site location. As well, following those items is the narrative provided by the applicant and additional documentation. So I would like to ask Dylan, has Michelle been able to join yet or she's still having technical difficulty?
Uh, it sounds like she's having some pretty serious issues over there. She is even having troubles getting on with her phone based on her text messages.
Why don't we have her join in by phone then? Could that be possible? Do you want to call her on your telephone and have her join or I could do that because I think it is important. There are some specific questions on this application that the commissioners may want to ask her.
Well, let's start. Does, or does anybody have any questions for staff based on what we've heard so far? I think it was pretty comprehensive.
Sure.
Do you want me to have her call into the Zoom meeting on her phone?
Or one of us could just call on her on the cell phone. Do you know?
Okay, well, I have a headset. I don't know that.
Oh, I can do that then I'll do that. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and allow you can to continue.
So at this point, if there are no questions for staff, let's bring the applicant into the meeting. So if you like, you can turn your video on and then we can see you or or not.
How's that?
That's good, good. Okay. So thoughts on the staff report?
I thought it was very thorough and my first narrative didn't do a good job, so I wrote a reply and so we, I think it all got incorporated. I think, I think the best person to actually talk right now, our architect is on them. So she can actually address that one issue that we have with the, the engineering, the possibility of moving it and the issues with that. So I don't know if she's brought over or not, or if you guys are ready for her. Oh, I guess one thing I wanted to mention is the letters of support, that one that she mentioned was sent in a couple of weeks ago, but we had at least two other letters of support from neighbors. Um, and I don't know, I don't know if, if they got additional ones, but two that I know of have supported the variance request as well.
Okay, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, yes, it's Kyle Myers, 44 Grant Avenue, Manatee Springs.
Okay.
Is Swagata Guha the architect?
Yes.
Okay, she is on, she's muted and needs to turn her video on.
Okay. Okay, I can talk. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, my name is Swagata Guha. I'm with Design Edge Architects and I am having trouble with you.
Dylan?
Can you state your address for the record, please?
Sure, my address, my home address is 3140 Arena Road, Colorado Springs, Colorado, eight zero nine two one.
Okay. So the floor is yours to explain the item under consideration for that.
Okay, so the way the garage attaches to the house at the nearest corner, it is six and a half feet from the top of the slope. And at the farthest corner, it's 16 feet away from the top of the slope. So if we were to push the house back, I mean, house forward closer to the slope, we'd end up almost being like two feet from the edge of the slope at the narrow end and 10 feet at the far end. So typically a geotech engineers like to see a slope projection of three is to one. Our slope is closer to one is to one, it's a very steep slope. And what that would do is the foundation typically needs horizontal and vertical stability. And by moving it closer to the slope, we're losing that stability. Even if we were to a, even if you were to be able to support the house with some specialized foundation, we run into the issue of having equipment that close to the edge of the slope to dig the foundation. So that becomes a different problem and a much more serious one because now you're risking equipment and people sliding down the slope if it's not handled very well. So from all these angles, when we considered all these angles, we felt it made sense to keep the house or to keep the garage further away from the slope and to kind of level it at the front of the house, which ended up as because encroaching into the rear setback.
Okay. Any questions for the applicants?
And yeah, this is Kyle Myers. One thing I wanted to point out is, is the, the rear of where the garage where the setback is of concern is, of course, already mentioned our property. But also it, there's another cliff back there. So if for some reason, who I guess we'd have no plan of ever selling it. But if somebody were to buy this property later on and were to split it up, there's no chance of anyone building close to the, to the garage, there's no possible build site until you get way back into the other property. I don't know if that's anything that you guys consider, but I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, if you go to page, the pictures, it is on page seven, it's the first picture. That is, that picture, the top picture is where the rear of the garage would be and kind of, kind of where that cliff starts is the property line that our other property starts.
Okay. That's the one on page six.
No, sir, page seven, the first picture, the top one. And then the bottom picture is the picture of the cliff that Swagata was just mentioning that she, she does, the engineers in her don't feel comfortable getting in closer to.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone commission have any questions for the applicants? Okay. At this point, Kyle, do you have anything more you'd like to add or are you good now with your?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll hold you aside and open the hearing to the public. And now is an opportunity, if anybody would like to comment on this item, I just raise your hand and we'll bring you into the meeting. Any hands? Okay. If there are no no more, no one wanting to comment on this and we'll close the public comment part of the public hearing and we can deliberate. So any thoughts on this? Anybody commission have any thoughts or comments? Okay, well, it seems to me that you know, I was comfortable with the architect's explanation for the dress item number one. I guess if we could strike that from the recommendation, if anybody is interested in making a motion on this. Tip.
So I move that we approve a variance 2014 with all of the staff's findings and recommendations, except that we would go ahead and strike the first, the first recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? No discussion then, let's all vote by raising our hand if you're in favor. Okay, and that carries six to zero and that one is done. Kyle, you have it. Okay, so can you address the next one, Christine, are you good on that one or?
I can, yeah, I can, I can work through these until Michelle's able to join.
Okay, so this one, I would guess that you're going to do variance 2009 and 2010 together. It seems like they're sort of a team.
They are, that is correct. This is, this is a request for two variances. The applicants are requesting approval for a rear and a side yard setback. This is associated with the replating of these properties into two separate lots. There is information attached to the report that gives a little bit more information. With the staff report, staff believes that the Manitou Arts Center was originally constructed in approximately 1925 and served as a bowling alley and a skating rink in its early years. After a number of uses, it was renovated in the mid 1980s into an arts incubator. At some point, perhaps in the 1950s, two residential units were created that were attached to the back and over an area of the commercial building. What is now the Manitou Arts Center or the MAC is requesting a minor subdivision in order to plot the commercial and residential portions of the building and the property such that the residential units can be sold at a point in the future. Associated with this request are the above mentioned minor subdivision being administratively processed and a rezoning and lot size variance for six south path. Because of the existing construction, there is no way to provide Because of the existing construction, there is no way to provide setbacks at the rear of the 513 Manitou Avenue or the side rear of Six South Path. The city does not require setback variances for these non-conforming situations when existing property lines are not being relocated, such as those around the outside perimeters of both lots. However, lines that are being altered, such as those in, excuse me, such as in order to separate the property into separate lots are required to meet setback or receive. On page one of this particular staff report requesting these two variances, there is a chart that is, that illustrates in code what our setback variances are and how they apply to 513 Manitou Avenue, which is the MAC, and Six South Path. Based on that explanation, 513 Manitou Avenue requires a rear side, excuse me, a rear yard setback variance of zero feet where 10 feet is typically required. Six South Path requires a north side yard setback variance of zero feet where 10 feet is required and a rear yard setback variance of zero feet where 15 feet is typically required. The planning commission may authorize variances from the requirements of the zoning code not related to use of a property. As we know, a variance is an extraordinary remedy and the criteria set forth in the code are intended to be limitations on the planning commission's power to authorize variances. The existence of the non-conforming structures is not grounds for the issuance of a variance and variances must run with the land. The planning commission must find all of the following criteria have been met. And at this time, I'll review those criteria. Item one, the applicant would suffer hardship as a result of the application of the code, which hardship is not generally applicable to other lands or structures in the same zone district because of the unusual configuration of the applicant's property boundaries, unique circumstances related to the location of existing structures thereon, or the existence of exceptional topographic conditions. Staff notes that the application indicates the existing conditions leave no option but to request variances in order to separate the residential and commercial portions of the property into separate lots. The narrative notes there is an area of the MAC that will still be underneath the residential building area and that will be, excuse me, and that will be addressed through easements and require fire protection upgrades be made to the commercial portion of the property. As such, the applicant's narrative indicates application of the code would cause a hardship due to the unique circumstances related to location of the existing building on the property. Staff does find that the application meets this criterion. Item two, with regard to no design alternatives or alternative locations. The application again notes that the location of the existing building area and the commercial and residential uses within the building do not leave any alternatives that would lessen or eliminate the requested variances. The only alternative would be to leave the property under a single ownership, which is not desirable for the MAC and staff would not consider reasonable. There are many zero-foot lot line buildings in Manitou Springs and the proposed configuration will result in increased safety for the residents of Six South Path by incorporating fire protections into the commercial portion of the building. As such, staff finds the application provides sufficient justification to meet this criterion. Item three, with regard to enforcement of the provisions depriving the applicant of rights enjoyed by the majority of other properties in the same zone district. The narrative states application of the code would not allow the MAC to plat and sell Six Path, Six South Path, excuse me. There are numerous ownership configurations in the commercial zones, including the zero-foot lot line buildings in the same block. Staff cannot find an overriding reason that separation of the properties should not be allowed. Staff finds the application provides sufficient justification to meet this criterion as well. Item number four, with regard to the need for a variance does not result from actions of the applicant or his or her agent, a violation of code or previously granted variance. Staff reports that the application states there have been no previous variances granted to the property and the current request does not resolve, result from a violation of the code. The building is existing, the uses are existing, and there are no requests for new or additional structures that would benefit from this application. As such, staff finds the criterion has been met. Item five, with regard to reasonable protections afforded adjacent properties. The application narrative states that other surrounding properties are sufficiently setback from the subject's property and the requested variances are internal to these properties. So do not impact any other property. As such, we have received no comments, no negative comments or negative recommendations by any city departments or outside reviewing agencies. As such, staff finds this proposal meets this criterion as well. Item six, with regard to the requested variance will not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. Hi, Michelle! Of the surrounding property. Staff notes that the application details that granting of the variance will not change the current conditions or appearance of the existing development. As such, staff finds the application meets this criterion. Item seven, the granting of the variance will A, observe the spirit of the code, B, secure the public safety and welfare, C, ensure that substantial justice is done. Staff notes that the application, the application notes that the variance process allows for issues to be resolved when application of the code to unique circumstances is problematic or infeasible. The application references the additional public safety resulting from the proposed replat that will require fire protection improvements between the commercial and residential uses and ownerships. The application asserts the planning process ensures transparency to the public, which ensures substantial justice. As such, staff finds the application meets this criterion as well. Based on all this, staff recommendation is as follows. The application addresses the variance criteria and staff supports the proposal, which will allow for the replating of the property and the other applications associated with the overall plans for separating the commercial and residential uses at this current property with single ownership. This is not the first time that the city has considered allowing existing developed property that does not meet current setback standards to replat. And, and Michelle noted in her staff report that likely won't be the last time, given the city's eclectic historic built environment. Based on the above evaluation and the justification provided in the application narrative, staff recommends approval of variance 2009 for a rear yard setback of zero feet for both 513 Manitou Avenue and Six South Path. And variance 2010 for a zero-foot side yard setback for Six South Path, as shown on the site plan and staff exhibit included with the staff report, with the following conditions, of which there are two. The first, this approval is contingent of approval of a minor, of an administrative minor subdivision plot to create two lots from the subject property. The second condition, the variances are granted to the existing development and no additional building area for either 513 Manitou Avenue or Six South Path will be covered by these variances. Additional or new construction that does not meet setbacks would require additional variances. And with that, I and Michelle, who has now joined, we would be up for taking any questions or concerns.
Any questions for staff? No, I think, looks like you did a good job there, so. If there are no questions, let's bring the applicant in.
I also sent Doug, okay. I was gonna say he disappeared, but.
Well, there he is, he's back, he re, he materialized. Re-materialized.
Greetings.
You'd like to state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Douglas Keithley Edmondson, 7 Keithley Road, Manitou Springs, Colorado.
Okay, and your thoughts on the staff report and recommendations?
Well, first I'd like to start off by thanking Michelle and Christine for their guidance through this situation. It's been very complex and difficult and unfortunately has been compounded with the aggravation of a rogue surveyor who doesn't seem to want to cooperate with the city codes officers, but we're working through that. No, I have nothing else to add. I think that, all that who are, and commissioners, good evening, who are involved in this, understand why the Manitou Arts Center is moving forward with this. This has afforded them the opportunity to make improvements to the MAC itself, the extension of the fire suppression system, to our fire exclusion to protect the apartments above and fire regress for the lower apartments. And then also sort of relieve themselves of the burden of having to manage these apartments. It's given them a little leeway. They have since vacated the apartments and they're working on them, cleaning them up and doing much-needed deferred maintenance. So we appreciate the opportunity to be heard by the commissioners this evening and we hope we can move forward with this project for the health of the community, offer Manitou another updated durable property for occupation and to further the financial stability of the Manitou Arts Center.
Any questions for the applicants? Okay, great, thanks. If, if we have some, we'll bring you, we'll bring you back up. So.
Thank you.
I'll open the hearing to the public. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this, please raise your hand. It looks like we do have one hand raised. Okay, you need to unmute your microphone. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Dan Stewart, 601 South Side Road, Manitou Springs. And I recognize some familiar faces there, greetings, everybody. I, I own the property at 101 Deer Path on the corner of High Street. I've owned it for 40 years and I'm very familiar with this property. I actually did some legal work probably 30 years ago, working on the tax assessment of the commercial versus the residential portions of that property. So I really do have familiarity with it. Actually, the residential properties at Six South Side are named for my sister and my mother and my daughter, even though I have no connection to those properties, but I've always appreciated the fact that they bear their names. So I just wanted to urge the commission to approve the requested variance pursuant to the staff recommendations. I thought you'd like to have some testimony about it.
Okay.
Thank you. Questions, and Christine, call me sometime.
Hey, no kidding, it's been way too long, it's been.
Great to see you.
Any questions for Mr. Stewart? Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, good night, everybody.
Okay. So it doesn't appear there are any more hands raised. So with that, we'll close the public comment part of the public hearing and we're ready to deliberate and hopefully make a motion. The floor is open, commission.
Okay. If nobody wants to speak, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve variance 2009 and variance 2010 with staff's conditions.
Okay, is there a second? And it looks like Tip raised his hand first, he seconded that. So if, if there's no discussion, then let's vote. Whatever, raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Okay, so. Right along. The next item is rezoning 2001, a preliminary meeting for Six South Path, Douglas Edmondson, applicant on behalf of Colorado Center for the Arts, the owner.
Thank you, commission, I am so sorry, I have to apologize first for, I've been having some technical problems at home and a whole cascade of things have happened in the last half an hour or so. And I'm just happy to finally have been able to log in and, and be here. And it's, looks like you all are moving at a record pace, so I'm sorry I've missed some of those other hearings. This is for approval of a, I'm sorry, I've got the wrong, the wrong one here, let me get, let me get the right one. When it rains, it pours. There we go. Yeah. Sorry about that, they were stuck together. So this is for a request to rezone the property at Six South Path. Once it is platted separately, it will be more appropriate for a residential zone. Currently, since it's all part of the MAC property, it is in the commercial zone. So the proposal is to rezone the property from commercial to high-density residential. I did an evaluation of both the general residential and the high-density residential and I recommended high-density, not only because it, the location being right there at the back of the MAC and right basically across from the side or the back of the Villa Motel, fits the, the, the reason that we created that zone and being adjacent to commercial development. But it also reduces some of the variances that would, that would be necessary, the lot size density variance, which is planned to be on the agenda next month, is less than if it's own general residential. So the zoning ordinance specifies that the commission will hold an initial meeting and then regarding the request and consider the application, hear comments or objections, request additional information and make preliminary recommendations. This is that initial meeting. There's no action taken at the preliminary meeting other than determining if the additional information, if any additional information is necessary and setting the request for public hearing at the commission's next regular meeting. Staff's provided information from the municipal code regarding the zoning regulations. In, in general, the, in, the regulations indicate that public necessity, safety, general welfare or good zoning practice can justify the change to the zoning of a property. You all have just heard the variances that are related to the replating, which will be done administratively once some of these other related applications are dealt with. Once platted into its own lot, the property will be primarily residential and staff finds rezoning Six South Path into a residential designation would constitute, constitute good zoning practice. And then it would also result in the property being more saleable and easier to obtain insurance and financing. There are issues at times, I get calls from financiers, banks, title insurance companies, appraisers, when they are appraising or, or, you know, working with residential properties that are zoned commercial. It's not something that they love and sometimes, times reports of people losing their financing because the, the bank or the mortgage company just will not loan on it unless it's zoned appropriately. So staff provided the criteria A through F in regard to a zone change per the ordinance. And the commission should consider that A through F, you know, as you're deliberating and thinking about this request. An evaluation of those. Uh, an evaluation of those items uh, will be uh, provided for the public hearing. Uh, staff's not gone into that detail at this preliminary uh, report, but we will be providing that uh, next month, assuming the public hearing is set for December. In addition, in addition to that A through F criteria, um, but as part of the zoning regulations, a rezoning uh, must a but, the proposed area must a but another's zone of the same type. Not the exact zone designation necessarily, but residential needs to a but residential, commercial needs to a but commercial um, in order to qualify. Otherwise you have um, spot zoning, which um, isn't, yeah, isn't really legal. Um, and so there is uh, residential zoning, actually general residential uh, on the other side of High Street uh, at the back of this property and across South Path uh, to the, I guess, southeast uh, residential zoning uh, is behind the villa, basically. Um. And so uh, staffs also outlined the property's location in regard to the different uses that are surrounding it. Um, so as I mentioned earlier, uh, the high density uh, residential request complies with the proximity requirement uh, because there is, is nearby adjacent uh, residential zone and um, I've provided a section of the zoning map that shows that surrounding properties and, and their relations. As I noted a little earlier, I did evaluate both the high density residential and general residential zone districts and you'll see the information um, in the chart on the second page of the report. Uh, six South Path, once platted, will have four thousand nine hundred and twenty square feet. Uh, there really isn't an option to make that square footage uh, larger based on how the development, the parking and, and everything already layout uh, on the property with the MAC, uh, the MAC building um, and, and, and that use as well. And so you can see um, under high density residential, it allows fifteen units an acre. Um. It uh, has somewhat similar uh, front and side yards and, and um, uh, the, the various uh, criteria, the various standards for development. Um, but the main, the main reason is, is that uh, at that lot size, there's less of a lot size density variance than there would be if uh, the property was zone general residential would be a pretty substantial variance under a GR zone and not near as much um, uh, for two units in the HDR. So based on the requirements of the HDR zone, um, you know, what should be provided uh, under that, that zone would be five thousand eight hundred and eight square feet for two dwelling units. And again, that's the, what's being proposed is four thousand nine hundred and twenty. So that's about eight hundred, uh, let's see, what did I say? Eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet under HDR, but under general residential, it would be over thirty-eight hundred square feet. So quite a difference. There is a request for the lot size density variance uh, on the agenda, but we have noted that that needs to be postponed to December. We felt like it was a little more appropriate to consider that along with the rezoning uh, once the actual lot size and and, and density is, is set by the commission uh, in regard to the zoning uh, standards. So the application, the applicant has provided, you know, name and address of the owners, the legal description. This would be lot two MAC subdivision. Once it's replatted, uh, evidence of mail notification, the property has been posted, advertised in the paper and the applicant, applicant has sent out uh, the required mail notices. Staff initially listed the minor subdivision as going before the planning commission. Uh, then since, we since determined that can be administratively processed once all these variances and, and different things are set. So the planning department will send a new notice out regarding the administrative minor subdivision. Um, if anybody in the audience is wondering what's happened with that because they got a letter stating that it was going to be before the commission. That's, that's what uh, what's happened regarding to that. You will get another legal notice. Um, at this point, though, staffs received no inquiries from members of the public or any surrounding neighbors on, on the requests um, and specifically on this request. A, an item for the application has provided a detailed explanation. Um, the, although the, the criteria uh, has not addressed, been addressed directly in the narrative. And again, that's the criteria A through G. Um, because the property is required, that as requested is developed, the applicant may have felt that addressing the above was unnecessary or that the other requests associated with the application uh, provide sufficient information related to the criteria. Uh, staff has no concerns regarding compliance with plan Manitou or the applicable statutory provisions, although the building date listed on the assessor's website is nineteen hundred. Neither the commercial or residential construction um, are that early. There have been buildings on that site. But the current incarnations uh, are not as early as nineteen hundred and, and frankly nineteen hundred is always su- suspect because that's the default that the assessor uses when they really don't know what the date is. Um. Uh, staff believes the residential development occurred subsequent to the commercial zoning and development along Manitou Avenue uh, residential zoning of the property and the existing residential use is compatible with the, the uses and character of the South Path High Street area. Uh, there's no new construction proposed. Uh, so there are no impacts on uh, natural hazards and the property is out of the floodplain. If the commission feels the criteria need to be addressed directly by the applicant, staff recommends it be required at the public hearing. Uh, luckily he's got kind of a, a, a second presentation to be able to take advantage of for a rezoning and that is certainly uh, additional information that uh, can be required uh, for the public hearing. Uh, supporting documents and maps. Staff didn't require additional supporting documents. Such as uh, you know, i- in a multi-owner uh, process, we might require a petition and maybe a map that shows where everybody lives. But um, since it's a single owner uh, situation as a lot of ours lately have been. Um, and you have a lot of information both in this report and um, uh, in other, other reports that you've seen tonight on this property. Um, we didn't feel that additional maps or information was really necessary. Um. The Public Services and Facilities Impact Report. Um, the applicant's narrative also does not address this code section and uh, which staff has previously acknowledged a number of times in various staff reports that um, it really is on a lot of what uh, we look at in um, regard to these very small developments or small rezonings. A lot of that uh, public services um, or public facilities and services impact report doesn't have a lot of applicability. When you read the, the, the different criteria, it's um, predelimited to what you can really kind of tease out to be applicable to these kinds of situations. However, staff does recommend the applicant attempt to address the criteria, again, for the public hearing. There are two or three things regarding utilities and you know, there's some, some statements that can be made, some pretty simple evaluation. Um, it shouldn't be a big deal. And um, at, at least at that point, when the commission makes the recommendation, uh, it's, you can kind of check that off that, you know, that uh, that information has been provided. Um, in regard to the citizen uh, participation plan, uh, staff didn't require a citizen participation plan over and above the normal uh, public notices. Again, given that this is a single property uh, on which the current use exists and um, is uh, basically will be permitted in the requested zone. Uh, staff didn't feel additional public outreach was necessary. Um, as uh, noted in the report, the current um, uses permitted in the commercial zone are hotels and motels, various retail establishments, uh, including liquor stores, variants, various office and personal service establishments. Um. And so under the current zoning, you could um, technically have someone propose to put in a convenience store instead of the two apartments and, and actually um, if they repurpose the existing building, they actually might be able to get the parking in as well. And that I don't think would uh, necessarily be appropriate or welcomed by any of the neighbors. Um. And so the high density residential zone, uh, we've provided the purpose statement. It does specifically talk about uh, multifamily or apartment buildings. And then uh, it allows for uh, townhomes, apartments, condos, usually more of the um, multifamily housing types, uh, which is another reason that we created it. So um, at this time, staff, uh, the planning commission should hear any public comment and ask for any additional information from planning staff. It may want to be provided for the public hearing or for the, from the applicant such as the amended letter of ac- application, which includes the rezoning criteria and the public services and facilities impact report. At the conclusion of the discussion, staff recommends the planning commission set the rezoning request for a public hearing at its December ninth, twenty twenty regular meeting at which time the commission will consider a formal recommendation to city council. And as noted, the commission will also consider a lot size density variance based on the anticipated zone designation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? Okay. Um, I guess with that, we can um, let the applicant, the applicant in briefly. I mean, there's not a lot at this point of testimony, but yeah, the comments. Okay. To state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yes, greetings. Douglas Keithley Edmondson, seven Keithley Road, Manitou Springs, Colorado. And greetings again, commissioners.
Hello again, and.
How are you? Uh, well, again, I'd like to thank uh, Michelle and Christine for their guidance in this situation. I'll be turning to them to uh, brush up the rest of the rezoning application. Um, you know, just sort of the structure of the letter and, and some of the other additions to uh, the application that they'll need to see uh, for the public hearing come December. And uh, obviously I think that the reason why we are requesting this is uh, under their advisement. Uh, as you can see, the, the criteria for the high density zoning versus the general residential uh, that leans more towards the high density. And uh, I'd like to probably engage if there's any sort of concern. I think probably the only concern, would there be other uh, future development of that particular uh, lot? And I think uh, it's easy to say that the lot itself and access to it uh, is too restrictive for there be, for there to be any sort of future development. So it's just a formality in order for us to move forward with this request.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, well.
And, and thank you for listening to the application.
Sure. Now we'll uh, if anybody in the audience would like to comment on this, ask questions, this is a preliminary hearing and uh, but if you have any questions, now would be the time to raise your hand. And then, let's see. I don't see any hands raised. And so with that, we'll close uh, the public comment part of this um, item and um, so now it, we're discussing this if, if um, I think the custom here is if there's any more information that we feel we, any other questions we'd like staff or the applicant to answer, this would be the time to bring those items up. If there's none, then the next item would be a motion to schedule, schedule the public hearing for December ninth.
I, I did want to just say that I do support um, the staff recommendation to have applicants address those criteria and I appreciate the applicant's um, willingness um, to, to do so. So I, I just wanted to underscore that, but I think that this is a very good application and um, I'm happy to move that we set the date uh, for the um, public consideration at our next meeting in December.
I'll second that.
Question? And let's vote. And that looks all six. That's unanimous. So that will be on the December ninth. At the December ninth meeting. So moving on. Next item is item six, uh, variance twenty fifteen. Lot size density variant, six South Path. Douglas K. Edmondson applicant on behalf of Colorado Center for the Arts owner.
And so the request is to postpone that to December.
Yeah, I just have one question. Since we'll be doing the public hearing at that meeting and then it goes on to city council. So we just would be making our finding on the lot size density variance based on the hope the council agreed with our, our recommendation.
Yeah, we've, we've done things in the past. We're basically, well, and, and as you've even heard tonight, um, incorporated that uh, the, any approval is contingent upon the approval of the other application. So I would anticipate recommending that any approval of the lot size density variance would be contingent upon council's approval of the rezoning.
Okay. Is there a motion? To postpone? Doesn't anybody want to mo- move to postpone this? Julia.
Fair. I move that we postpone, sorry, uh, variants twenty fifteen, I lost my agenda um, for the lot size density variance to the December ninth meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second. Hold favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Gina, do you have your hand up, Gina?
Genie's got a great part. But that's about all of what, all you can see of her.
Well, that's uh, five. Anyone opposed? No, so we, that motion carries five zero. Now we'll move on. One, seven is um, vacation two thousand one, vacation right of way. Vacated portion of Fairview Avenue, five fifteen Ruxton Avenue. Management Pike Speed Cog Railway Company applicant.
Thank you. So um, as the agenda title states, it's a vacation of a portion of the Fairview Avenue right of way uh, adjacent to the cog railways ownership. Um, as part of the required processes associated with the uh, business operations and property improvements uh, being made by the cog railway, the city required replating of the property. Um, just, this is just on the south side of Ruxton where the actual train operations are. Um, and in, we want that to be in a single lot. And then during the surveying for the replat, uh, it was determined that there are several sheds uh, that are part of the train operations that encroach into an air, area of Fairview. And in order to clear that encroachment, this vacation uh, application was necessary. Uh, if approved, the area of vacated Fairview of which the cog owns the property on either side um, will be incorporated into the minor subdivision to create the single lot uh, from the cog owned property on the south side of Ruxton uh, that comprises all the railway operations. Uh, the minor subdivision will be administratively reviewed um, and approved. So the surveyor has provided the vacation exhibit that follows the report. This shows the proposed vacation of This shows the proposed vacation abuts area of Fairview that formerly connected with Ruxton Avenue that was previously vacated. So, there was an area, I guess the original plating of Fairview, it swung around and actually connected back out onto Ruxton Avenue. But that was vacated many, many years ago. And then this area shows the total square footage, the, the, the exhibit shows the total square footage of this proposed vacation, which is a little over 11,000 square feet. There is information and requirements in the subdivision ordinance regarding vacations of rights of way. So, an accurate graphic needs to be provided showing the vicinity map. That is provided, there's an attached exhibit. The exhibit also shows the developed part of Fairview Avenue. You can, you can see that that is a significant distance from this portion to be vacated. The lots and blocks, the vacation exhibit was created by compass surveying and mapping and shows the required information for the vacation approval. The ownership of abutting properties, according to the El Paso County Assessor, the proposed vacation area about, about slot 1 through 7 on the south side of Fairview and the property on which the railway operates, abuts undeveloped Fairview on the north. Both abutting properties are owned by the cog. The closest adjacent property not owned by the cog is Lot 8, which is located just east of the end of the proposed vacation. And the owner of Lot 8 is the City of Colorado Springs. The right-of-way lines, widths, locations and names of all streets. The site plan provides the information as required. On the second page, indication is maybe appropriate of existing or proposed access to abutting properties. There's no access to other properties or the cog railway that would be impacted by the vacation requested. The developed part of, sorry about that, something's making my house rumble. The developed part of Fairview Avenue is some distance from the vacation. The road would need to be extended if other properties between the end of developed Fairview and Lot 8 owned by Colorado Springs. If those other owners in between those two points desired access, then Fairview would need to be developed on west, basically. And there's no through access or potential for through access on Ruxton, not only because of the long ago vacation of the portion of Fair, the Fairview that used to go through what's now the cog property, but the train operations also basically block any kind of potential for vehicular access back on, back, connecting back to Ruxton. The exact location and width of all existing street development is, is required to be provided. The vacation exhibit shows the plotted with the Fairview, but there's no developed roadway in this area to be shown. And all existing drainage and utility easements. Staff did request comments from Public Services and Colorado Springs Utilities and neither requested drainage or utility easements in this area since they're building encroachments into the right-of-way, simply retaining easements in the vacated area would really not be optimal. Should CSU or Manitou Springs determine subsequent to this action, there's a desire for easements that can be accommodated via the minor subdivision plat, which will be processed administratively following this request. So, both CSU and our Public Services kind of get a little second bite of the apple if they need to and would be able to request easements if, if desired through the minor subdivision process. So, we aren't necessarily shutting that door until the subdivision plat is, is finalized. Comments on that minor subdivision replat will be sought just as they were for this one. I don't really anticipate comments changing, but I just wanted to let the commission know that if there was some sort of concern that we'll make sure that through that subsequent process that we double check about easements. And then the data press, preparation scale and north, north point for the information that's required to be provided has been concurred with. An accurate and clear legal description of the proposed vacation area, so the legal description has been provided, the square footage has been provided. These are all things that'll be used for the vacation ordinance, should this be recommended to the city council. And speaking of that, according to code, the planning commission will recommend to council approval, conditional approval or disapproval of vacation of rights of way. The standards for findings in Title 16 of the municipal code are as follows and staff noted that I have added the highlighted area as some of the more pertinent language. As I've noted, there have been no adverse comments from the reviewing agencies. Access to other private properties would not be impacted by the proposal and we've had no comments or questions from the public regarding this request. The application provides the information required by code. The proposed vacation is for undeveloped right-of-way that abuts a section of previously vacated Fairview Avenue and of which the cog railway owns the property on either side. There have been no adverse comments received from any reviewing agency or any property owner in the vicinity of the proposal. Staff recommends the planning commission forward a recommendation to the city council for approval of the AC 2001 for vacation of an undeveloped portion, portion of the Fairview Avenue right-of-way as shown on the vacation exhibit dated August 21st, 2020, as requested. And staff recommends the findings as noted that relate to the standards for findings in this, in the subdivision code.
Any questions for staff? Okay. You can bring the applicant in now. Okay, state your name and address for the record?
Ted Johnston, 1903 West Cucharas Street, Colorado Springs, Colorado, 80904. And I'm the Assistant General Manager for the cog railway.
Okay, and your thoughts on the staff report?
I thought the staff report was very thorough. I want to thank the staff for holding my hand through this process, not being a land use guy. Didn't really know exactly what we were getting into, but they were very helpful and getting us to where we need to be and I don't think there, we have any, any concerns or any issues.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, well, if we have more questions, we'll ask you when they come up. And if you have nothing more to add, then we'll move on to the public part of this and if anybody interested in. I don't see any hands raised, if anybody would like to comment on this, now would be the time to raise your hand and make your case. And we do most so has his hand raised. Bring Spencer back. Okay. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Spencer Wren. I'm the General Manager of the cog railway. I live at 320 Crystal Hills Boulevard here in Manitou Springs. And I just wanted to echo Ted's thoughts and thank Michelle and Christine for their hand-holding through this whole process. And, but I, the really only thing I wanted to kind of bring to the forefront is the fact that Fairview Avenue there are what was proposed to be Fairview Avenue in 1880, whenever that was plotted is an extremely, it would be, I'm sure everyone's been up Hydro Street before, but this is if, if it were to be built as a street, it would be much steeper than, than Hydro Street. So, it's a quite steep, it was an ambitious project by whoever platted it in 1880 or so. But anyway, that's kind of my, my only comment. Thanks so much for your continued support for staff and hopefully the planning commission will support us in this application.
Thank you. Okay. So, I don't see any other hands raised, so we can close the public comment and liberate, make a motion, whatever we want to do now. So, if anybody would like to jump in, feel free. This one is to recommend to council that you vacate the right-of-way. A tip?
I think that the staff makes a convincing argument and so I'm happy to support this proposal. Are you good with my making an emotion right now?
Absolutely.
So, I'd like to, I have to go back to it. I, I'd like to move to recommend to city council approval of vacation 2001 with staff's findings and recommendations.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? And let's vote on this, raise your hand. That's zero, so that's unanimous. And this will go to count, go on to council now. Moving right along. Item of business is minor subdivision 2006, create two platted lots 2 to 4 and 8 Ken, Cannon Avenue, Beth Pastor for Twin Bears Property LLC and Glass Shop Property LLC applicant.
Thank you. This is a minor subdivision, but the reason that staff has put this before the planning commission instead of doing this administratively is because there is some city property involved. And so, this will have to go, not necessarily to approve the subdivision, but for the mayor to sign off on the plat because it is, is creating a tract out of the city property that is over the creek, basically. The mayor will have to get, council will have to authorize that signature and so staff felt it was more appropriate for this to come before planning commission since council was going to have to authorize the mayor's signature and, and we'll have to, you know, explain the, the proposal to council, obviously. So, this is to create two whole lots, two tracks and various access easements to resolve existing building and ownership encroachments on Canyon Avenue and Lover's Lane. So, you have the information, the subdivision site plan and the actual replat document. The replat will facilitate config, reconfiguration of the lots associated with 2 and 4, 2 through 4 Canyon and 8 Canyon Avenue. Both properties were formerly under the same ownership. However, now the owners are related but have separate titles to the properties and the building improvements are not within their property boundaries. Additionally, the city owns the area of Fountain Creek, which is tract B over which the building at 8 Canyon extends. Just to note, the city's ownership of Fountain Creek does extend farther west to basically where Lover's Lane comes around, actually, I think that's Lafayette, where it comes in between Common Wheel and Rocky's Building. And so, we, for some reason, have this little stretch of Fountain Creek, which is pretty unusual and we only have a few areas in town where this happened, for whatever reason. So, finally, tract A is created for the parking lot owned by a third LLC associated with the owners of Twin Bears LLC and the Glass Shop Property LLC. The replat results from the owner of proposed Lot 1 requesting a permit to do repairs to the enclosed rear decks on the building at that location and it was determined there were encroachments onto the adjacent property. Also, the owner of proposed Lot 1 went through a lengthy permit process to make similar improvements to existing construct, I'm sorry, not proposed Lot 1. The current one was, was requested by, this replat was requested because proposed Lot 1 was trying to do some repairs, but previously the owner of proposed Lot 2 went through the lengthy process to make similar improvements to existing construction on the back of that property, that's the 8 Canyon property, which was also found to extend over the, over the city's ownership of the creek in that area. So, when this came up again with this adjacent property and there were all these encroachments and, and, and everything, staff recommended that both, if one was going to need to be replatted, that perhaps both of them could get replatted and kind of clean the prop, clean the, the situation up between the two of them, not only for the benefit of the city and they're allowing permitting and everything, but also at some point in the future, if these owners wanted to sell, this will probably make it significantly easier for that to happen. The city in regard to that proposed Lot 2, the city did permit the repairs, but those were provisional on our issuing an easement or an encroachment license for the area over the creek. That hadn't happened because our encroachment license was just being created and frankly, it's still got some bugs to work out of it as far as for this kind of situation. And so, we hadn't done anything with that yet, so this, this will help kind of close the loop on that previous permitting for 8 Canyon. Tract B provides the legal description for that city-owned area. So, a legal doc, a legal document that allows the private improvements overhead can be drafted and, and will reflect that legal description. The mayor will need to sign the replat document on behalf of the city in regard to creating tract B. So, the request, as I noted, will need to go to city council subsequent to planning commission action in order for council to authorize his signature. So, staff's not intending that you make a recommendation of approval of the minor subdivision, that is within planning commission's power. But we will be noting if, if planning commission does approve it with or without conditions that what your action has been so that it helps inform city council. The subdivision regulations require minor subdivision plats to contain the following. The name of the subdivision, Beth Pastor Subdivision. The legal description is noted under the name of the subdivision and under the area titled, be it known by these presents. The square footage of 5,326 is noted at the end of the legal description, so it's a fairly small total area. But the, the commercial buildings are two and three stories, I believe they are, or at least two stories. Data preparation scale and north point, so this, the plat was prepared March 29th, 2020 with revisions on August 10th. That's in the right, lower right corner, the scale and north point are also provided. The vicinity map is shown on the second page of the plat. Location of land intended to be dedicated or reserved. The proposed, there's no rights of way or other dedications necessary. There are various access easements created on the plat for the benefit of subject owners and owners of adjacent property. There's access from the parking area, there's access that has historically gone across the 2 to 4 Canyon property for the adjacent owner on the, I guess, for lack of a better direction, east side of that property. So, this again kind of helps document all of that and clean it up. Due to the development of the property and surrounding area, standard utility easements aren't necessary or proposed. Um, the properties were originally platted prior to when the city required dedication of land for parks, open space and schools or payment in a fees in lieu. There are no schools, parks or open space planned for, or feasible really in this area. Therefore, staff recommends the collection of fees in lieu of dedication as shown on the chart as noted. Um, the above square footage includes the area of city ownership tract B, and that square footage needs to be confirmed and removed for the calculation. So this would be a maximum, not, um, it likely will go down slightly, uh, because of needing to pull that square footage out. Additionally, the number of dwelling units in both buildings combined needs to be confirmed. And any change, uh, needs to be updated with the El Paso County assessor's records and may, uh, could impact above calculation. However, it is the city's practice to exclude fees in lieu for existing dwellings when no additional density is proposed. Therefore, staff has noted the fees with and without dwellings, and the total fees in lieu is without dwellings. Um, so it's good to have it documented, but staff's recommendation is going to be consistent with what we've done for other property owners with existing dwelling, dwelling units on parcels that are being replatted is not to charge them for the existing dwellings that have been in place for such a long time. Um, so the plat indicates the monuments found and set. Uh, the, uh, certification by the surveyor is provided, uh, the signature blocks for the owners and associated notaries, the El Paso County Clerk and Recorder and the Planning Commission Chair are provided as required. Uh, the statement of ownership is located at the beginning of the legal description. Um, and it's consistent with what appears in the El Paso County Assessor's Records. Um, the certificate waiving access rights across, uh, major highways and et cetera is not applicable. Uh, areas shown on the map which, uh, are not part of the, of the subdivision, uh, that plat needs to be updated to conform with the labeling requirement. Um, the bearings and distances are provided. Uh, the exact layout, the, the information is provided in regard to boundary lines, links of arcs. Um, in regard to easements, uh, since the surrounding area is developed with utilities already in place, the plat was not required to provide the standard drainage and utility easements around the perimeters and lots. Uh, even if we required it, there's buildings covering most of them. So, um, that wouldn't necessarily be, uh, a feasible thing. Um, Colorado Springs Utilities reviewed the plat and provided rec, some minor recommendations for technical revisions. The city's consulting engineer will review the plat once it's final and before going to city council. And staff will provide all the, uh, comments to the surveyor for incorporation into the final document. Uh, we don't anticipate any major, uh, comments, uh, just, uh, it, it really is a technical review. Uh, when the consulting engineer, uh, reviews those, um, uh, there, uh, the lots are appropriately labeled, um, the, uh, there are no streets proposed within the subdivision, so that's, uh, not necessary. Um, item N on page three is where I'm at. Uh, the as platted and as replatted graphics are the same size and scale as required. Um, there are no, no build areas shown on the plat and plat note number three can for confirms there are no areas of thirty percent or greater slope on the properties to be platted. Staff generally likes, uh, and, and frequently requests a plat note in that regard so that it's clear that it's not something that was just missed, but that there was actually an evaluation and the thirty percent or greater slopes don't act, don't exist. Um, so staff appreciates the, um, surveyor incorporating that. The city's regulations also require, uh, the following, uh, information in the subdivision site plan. And, uh, so that is also in your packet. It shows the buildings and in some of that information. Uh, so the existing buildings are shown. Um, the, uh, no vehicular access to adjoining properties is necessary or prov, or, or proposed. The grades of canyon and Lover's Lane, uh, should be provided on the subdivision site plan. Um, contours have been provided. Uh, you can see that those are relatively flat. The current use of the property is service, surface parking, which is tract A and commercial mixed-use buildings on lots one and two, and tract B contains Fountain Creek. Uh, there are no public improvements proposed, uh, surrounding streets are developed. The property is served by city utilities and main lines are in place. Public services has no requirements for improvement or upgrades to the infrastructure related to this replat. There are, uh, no proposed covenants or deed restrictions. Uh, the title insurance, a current title, uh, insurance document has not been provided, and that will need to be submitted and reviewed by both the city and the surveyor to ensure there are no easements or issues that would impact the plat. Uh, the certificate of taxes, uh, needs to be obtained from the El Paso County Treasurer. That is something I think that, uh, the owner can even, uh, request online. It's a standard certificate that they do. And what that shows is that, um, there's no back taxes or taxes are current because we require taxes to be current in order to file the plat. The, uh, letter of agreement for electric and natural gas is unnecessary, as I've noted previously. Both the buildings on the prop, on the, uh, that are part of the proposal, uh, are already serviced, uh, with existing infrastructure. A drainage plan and report, uh, is not needed for the property. Again, it's already developed. It is located in Fountain Creek Flood Plain, but no new construction is proposed. Um, so we, we don't really need to have, um, a drainage plan. It, it already is in place, whatever drainage there is. Uh, proposed location of bridges and culverts and other stormwater improvements. Again, public services hasn't required new or improved storm wa, stormwater facilities uh, to serve the property. Since the property's developed and no new improvements are proposed, a geolock, a geologic hazards report has not been triggered or required. So, uh, the proposed plat basically cleans up the existing conditions, which puts, puts the existing development on its own properties and documents easements for existing accesses and creates a tract over the city's ownership, which will help to find the area for an easement or encroachment license. Therefore, based on the criteria for approval of a minor subdivision set forth in the subdivision code, staff recommends granting minor subdivision two thousand and six to create lots one and two and tracks A and B, Beth Pastor subdivision, following conditions of approval, following, with the following conditions of approval. Uh, prior to finding the plant, uh, prior to filing, the plat will be updated to include, uh, A, that areas that are not part of the subdivision be labeled and the lines associated with those areas be dashed. B, a note restricting the sale or removal of tract A out of the common ownership with lot one or lot two, whichever property tract day is associated with. Staff notes that, that this tract A, um, provides parking for these commercial properties, and I think at least uh, residents of one, if not both the buildings and, um, we would not want to see that property sold separately, um, and somehow try to develop. Uh, it would not serve our downtown as well. Um, the applicant shall provide a current certificate of taxes. Uh, we need to exclude the city's, uh, square footage, so, um, that wouldn't be applicable to that either because we don't pay taxes. So, uh, we would not, they would not get a certificate of taxes for the portion of property that's the city's. Uh, again, to current title insurance document for each property in excluding the cities, uh, for review by the surveyor and the city. The grades of canyon and lover lane, Lover's Lane along the property fronted, frontages shall be added to the subdivision site plan and provided for the planning department file. The property owner shall pay the fees in lieu of land dedication for parks, open space and schools in the amount of, total amount of two hundred and twenty dollars as broken out the table in the staff report, again, when the city property is pulled out of there, that'll probably go down a little. So you could say, uh, a maximum amount of two hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, the surveyor has ninety days from the date of approval to provide all required information and submit the final Mylar for filing, or the approval will expire, and the surveyor shall provide CAD drawings of the final approved plat at the time of submission of the final Mylar, uh, so that the city can update HGIS. And that is, uh, the staff report, and I'm happy to answer questions as I can.
Any questions? Okay. Well, let's bring the, so there are no questions. Let's bring the applicant in. Okay, you can unmute and turn on your video if you like, state your name and address for the record.
Sorry, this is crazy, but this is really my first Zoom call. So, uh, or Zoom meeting. Um, oh, it's really dark too. Uh, my name is Beth Pastor and my address is one two zero eight West Browning Avenue in Woodland Park, Colorado. Eight oh eight six three.
Your thoughts on the staff report and recommendations?
Oh, I thought she did a great job. And, and Michelle, I appreciate your help so much. Oh, my goodness. So, um, um, she covered everything so thoroughly. I just basically really want to fix up my property. That's what I, this whole thing is entailed. I just want to get things going the right way. And I see the wisdom in replating that because it is really a mess. And I heard somebody earlier say that they needed a surveyor. Well, the surveyor that I had, Jim, he's really good if you guys need one. But, um, he, it was such a mess back there to try to figure out the lines and things like that. So, um, oh, the one thing I did notice that the certificate of taxes, I did get that form and I emailed it, but I, I apologize, it was very late today. So hopefully you receive that. And if you didn't, let me know.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like?
Um, I'm sure there is, but I'm nervous, so I can't think of it right now.
Do, uh, any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, this is one of the more interesting ones I've seen, so.
It's a mess.
Okay, so with that, if, um, yeah, don't have any more, if there are no questions, we'll move on and public comment. If anybody in the audience would like to comment on this item. And I don't see any hands raised. Attendees are dwindling quickly, so. Part of the, uh, public hearing now, and, um, we can discuss and make a motion if anybody is interested. Does everybody understand this one thoroughly?
I have to say, I was scared when I was, one, before I started the report, but it, if you just follow along, it, it, you know, it fell into place, but I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to explain it and not have it become gobbledygook. So thank you all for hanging in there.
If someone asks me about this one, I'd have to refer back to the staff report.
That's good to know.
So would anybody like to make a motion? Or make a comment even? Uh, Julia?
I'm happy to make a motion. It's gonna take a second. Um, I move to approve minor subdivision. Okay, I lied. I'm, I'm MNS two thousand and six to create lots one and two and tracks A and B with staff recommendations and with staff recommendations. Wasn't like when Jeanie does it.
That's okay. It's, works just the same. Is there a second? Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? And raise your hand in favor of the motion. And I saw, there's Jean. Okay. Okay, so that's six zero. That's unanimous. And, um, that's all I need to do for this. And now we'll move on. Next item is other business or notice of council action and updates.
I would like to just briefly provide you an update on the municipal zoning code update project. rewrite and update project. So we, um, completed interviews, um, several weeks ago with the can, not even several weeks ago, about two weeks ago with candidates. Uh, we had four excellent firms that put forth very good proposals, all with appropriate relevant experience. We're in the final negotiations with one of those firms now. They have done quite a bit of work in our area. They're well-known to many in the community. Um, so we're looking forward to that. My expectation in terms of a timeline where we are now is that it'll go on, the contract will go on the agenda, consent agenda for city council the first Tuesday in December. Um, with that, we expect there'll be behind the scenes kickoff work that'll be happening between staff and the consultant during the month of, months of December and January. Um, uh, we are hoping that January would be an opportunity to introduce them to this group. Um, allow them to talk a little bit about their approach and, um, be, just begin that formal process. As of right now, we're still on track, um, according to the proposals we received to be able to hopefully have complete acceptance and approval of, um, all the updates to the municipal zoning code by December thirty first of twenty-one. Um, I, I'll be honest, I'm a little queasy trying to move that quickly, but all of the consultants felt like that was something that could be done because our, our code is not, um, so voluminous that we can't get through it. But, um, but we're really excited about that. So we're moving forward on that with quite a bit of enthusiasm.
Great.
May I ask a question, Chair?
Julia?
Uh, will the proposals be made public or those?
They certainly could be. They certainly could be upon request, uh, anyone who wanted to see those. Are, are you interested in seeing the proposals?
I'm certainly not gonna file a, the state version of a FOIA, but I just, I just wondered if the, if the town was, or the city was making them available online.
Um, I don't know that we're publishing them online, but if there was anyone who was interested, we certainly would.
Okay.
Good question. Very good question. We haven't had anyone indicate so far that they wanted to see those, but as we get closer to city council, you're probably spot on that we'll get some questions.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anything else? Uh, any other notice of council action?
You have the, uh, two items on the agenda that we provided the update, the final plat for the Becker's Town Homes, um, was approved six to zero with one abstention at the November third council meeting. And, um, the major conditional use for the mobile food truck after a lot of discussion, uh, ended up back on the, uh, Sun Water property. Uh, it was approved there with the condition that it would be reviewed in six months or at the lifting of, uh, the COVID restrictions by the state, uh, whichever comes first. Um, I believe that, um, the council does not anticipate that use, uh, being allowed permanently, uh, which is why they tied it to the COVID restrictions. Um, and uh, just that, uh, they would allow that the city administrator had the authority under her COVID authority to allow them to go ahead and, uh, begin operations, uh, before, uh, any kind of parking variance was dealt with or anything. Um, and so I know Christine and I have been discussing how and when and what would make sense if it is really a temporary use based on COVID, uh, how to deal with that. So, um, once we, I think, come up with once we, I think, come up with a final kind of plan for how that's going to lay out, we'll at least update you all.
Great. Any questions? Okay. Well, that's, we're at the end of the meeting. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
Just want to apologize again. I'm so sorry. And I'm so sorry, Christine. I know. Believe me, I, I was almost at the point of feeling like I was gonna throw up by the time I got on here. And I can only imagine how you all felt. So.
That's a good thing about us working closely on all of these. We know, we know what's going on.
Good.
Thank you.
Faster than I thought we would. So.
Gosh, yeah.
So if there's nothing else, then I guess we can adjourn and everybody stay safe. Keep your masks on. Stay away from everybody you know, don't know.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Good night.